Using the IASB template is they link the updates to our board policy with the handbook. And that's what I love about redoing this handbook. This handbook's been a pro-- it's been a work in progress since January. And so it works really well with updating policies and then it works right into the handbook with using the same platform.
And those of you that, well, even if you weren't on the negotiations, you know that one of the things that we do is we have our master contract and some of those things that were not going to stay in the master contract that were moved over to the handbook, that's, and Gail may be talking about this a little bit later, some of those specifics, I'm just talking about the COVID things right now. But that's why it's, and we're basically following what IASB recommends for us. The page 39, if you take a look at that, the extended family medical leave. This is again where they have the situation where it may be two-thirds of their regular pay and employee has to be at least 30 calendar days within the system. And again, we will, we will talk to them about that. If you take a look at the next one on page 40, basically it's talking about there in the event that school facilities are closed due to COVID concerns, employees will follow the procedures outlined in our return to learn plan. That makes sense. Visitors, whether in person or remotely, you know, we're gonna, there's gonna be some limitations to that. We, we could do a Zoom and they, you know, kids in whatever class could have whoever they wanted for their person, the visitor or the guest. But in person, I think that we may have some limitations on that, definitely. Visitors are also required to follow the district rules on the health and safety as well as the social distancing in our public health, in the public health guidelines. So if someone's coming in, like let's say that someone came into our district and we said that we needed to have them in here, they're gonna follow our mask regulations, they're gonna follow our social distancing. If we're, if they were in a classroom for some unknown reason, they would go ahead and, you know, barriers and the whole bit. The only thing I was looking at, I was trying to think of if there'd be something that I could come up with. I think that we've, the one thing that we talked about administratively is Iowa State student teachers. Am I right with that administrators?
Yes.
Okay, so that might be someone, and that's, that's something that I just thought of off the top of my head. That may be someone that's coming in that's a little bit different. We're okaying them to come in, but they're gonna follow our rules.
Yep.
Okay.
Is there anything of that statement, like you mentioning them coming in following, do we have visitors that are approved to come in? Or is there like a questionnaire that they have to fill out to say? Maybe that wasn't more at the beginning of things when you had to say, I haven't traveled this or I haven't shown any symptoms or been around somebody who's quarantined.
I don't think that we have a questionnaire, but.
I would think each building would want them to log in.
You don't think they would want them to?
No, they should all log.
What's the policy we have now?
We do anyway, right?
Yeah, what's the policy we have now?
If someone comes into one of your buildings, basically they have to log or they have to go ahead and sign in, right? And then do you give them a visitor pass or a lanyard or whatever you wanna call it?
Yeah. And that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. I know we do that today and that we would continue doing that. It's oftentimes practice when you walk into a place that they ask you a couple of questions and they say.
Oh, like have you been sick?
Have you been sick? Are you currently quarantined? It's just like two or three questions, check, check, that they do sign off. And I was just asking if that additional step was there? Because obviously we wouldn't be able to verify that information on their behalf.
Right.
You know, so that's what I was talking about. Just a, just a question, no answer maybe, but maybe we can consider.
Yeah.
We're not talking about limiting them, their access to the classroom. You know, if they bring a kid to lunch or a backpack or things like that where sometimes we might have said, they say, oh, we'll take it down. No, we'll take it down. So just kind of stop.
Okay.
They've got a nice set of questions at McFarland Clinic.
Yeah, that's, those are the questions I'm thinking of.
Exactly. Cause I had to answer them today, yeah.
And I think it would probably be most of the Iowa State students.
Yeah, exactly.
No, so that's what I'm kinda thinking is, is the one thing that we're gonna get hit with and we can talk about it later, but when we look at the Iowa Department of Health and we blow past that 20%,
Yeah.
is there a way we can bifurcate that? They didn't write that for counties that have a public institution in them. And so I think we'll need to further vet that later on in the meeting wherever we think the best place to do that is. But I think we can anticipate in August that Story County will blow past the 20%. And then so can we bifurcate it or does that immediately mean that, that we're going all online for all of our students? Or could we say, hey, if you have an Iowa State student at home or you're an Iowa State instructor, you go online, but we're gonna leave everybody else in school?
Yeah.
I, I don't have answers to those, but, but I wanna get people thinking about it before we even get there because I think that's gonna be staring us in the face really, really fast. And so we might as well, you know, get that noodle tonight if we can.
And we can talk about that.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but related to the visitors, what we were just discussing is our thinking with the practicum students, sometimes we get 30, 40, or 50 of them over the course of several weeks. And we can't really control what they're doing as far as mitigation outside of school. Whereas a student teacher is virtually working on our staff. You know, they're following our expectations every day and our protocols. And it just seemed like a much safer opportunity to keep things that we can control within our realm and those that we can't kind of be a little more cautious on just to.
Yeah, you could close that now.
Yeah.
We did, we, Iowa State sent out a survey and your comment is timely. Iowa State sent out a survey, I just sent it back to them. Said that we would go with the student teachers because I think we already had those set up. But we're not gonna allow, that sounds bad. We're not gonna have practicum students in during this time.
Okay, that's a good call.
Yep.
Yeah.
I want you to know that on the back page, this is the acknowledgement, basically that, that the employees are basically, that they've read it and that they reviewed the related things that are in the yellow. And we're asking them to sign off and date that. I wanna stress again, we're trying to make it a very safe place. We wanna make sure that if people have questions, they feel good that they can ask that. And I think that this, these things that are here, that are highlighted will help that. I think that this will help so that there's maybe not the anxiety that might have been there. Well, what happens if this or what happens with that? Again, I apologize if I read too much to you, everyone. I just wanted to make sure that you had an understanding of what's going on. Another thing that was mentioned that was a question, and some of you, I think, I don't know who for sure, but some of you had an opportunity a few weeks back to go and be a part of a webinar with IASB. And then I think that one of you shared the link with a couple of us and had an opportunity to look at that. And one of the things, it was some good information, but one of the things that was talked about was any policy restricting vacation or travel for staff or students during the COVID. This is something that was mentioned as far as a safety measure during our IASB webinar. So what I did was, I did a couple of things. I, first of all, I had contacted, I put out a survey to some of the surrounding our conference schools as far as if they were doing anything. Didn't get much response back. I called John Schaldal, you guys remember John when he worked with us at the AEA? And said, John, can you put this out to the AEA? There's weekly meetings and see if anyone is doing anything like this as far as the policy. Now that doesn't mean that because people aren't doing it, that we can't do it. That, you know, I want everyone to realize that. He said to me, he said, there was, the response, no one had this in their policy yet. I talked to Eric Howard, you guys know who I'm talking about there? Eric Howard is the IASB person. And I just said, Eric, I wanted to get a little more because I know this is a question that came up from some of our board members. He said, right now there are not a lot of schools that have it yet. He wouldn't say that there, you know, were X amount. But he said, I think that this is something that you're gonna see eventually maybe come out depending on what happens with COVID. I think that you might see this too. Gail and I had the conversation as we move further into like a break where it's Thanksgiving or where it's Christmas. I did, then I did, I think, asked some of the local, a couple of the surrounding schools and neither one of them, I got information from a couple of bordering schools, and neither one of them right now are doing anything with it. Not to say again that it would be bad, but right now I don't, I don't know that there's any that are, that are doing that. I wouldn't say that we wanna throw that away, but I did not see anyone that had anything that they, you know, like I said, I had IASB, I had our conference, I had our surrounding schools. We can, we can look into it. I don't know that, you guys that were on the webinar, was there a policy that IASB showed you?
No, I think it was just more of a topic conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all it was.
Well, they, what they mentioned Lindsay was, and I'll just read the notes. I had vacation travel policies from employees should take into consideration a 14-day quarantine when traveling out of state, especially to a hotspot. And, and I mean, that was specifically stated. Now, that webinar was on July 15th and at that time Iowa was even quieter than it is now. There's been more COVID in Iowa since then, certain story county. And we had hotspots like Phoenix, Houston, Florida. And basically they were saying, do not have staff go there and then come right back to your school. So, you know, it, I don't know that we have to have it as a policy. I think it would be a good statement to make that, hey, let's, we're all in this together. It's kinda like what the baseball and softball team did this summer. I mean, they were in it together, they did, they were successful to go through the whole summer with no positives. We're not gonna go without any positives, but let's work together as a team to try to minimize our exposure.
Yep, that's a good point. Laura, I know that you and I have had discussions and I don't know if it's been with Story County Public Health or not, but I think that one of the board members maybe asked the question about if we're a red state as, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
And any comment on that Laura? Cause I know that Public Health had kind of thrown out some information there.
Well, I looked up on the website everywhere and it listed all the states, 50 states. And there's no travel specialty for Iowa, like we're limited. But everybody doesn't want us, if we go anywhere, we have to 14 days quarantine.
That's what I brought up.
We're the pollution.
Well, I think Minnesota, there's several states that are listed that they don't have a travel thing. But the tricky part is can you control like parents of kids going to Sturgis, let's say, for that coming back? And, you know, we're just talking about staff here, right?
Staff, and well, it can be students too.
And I'll give you a real life example that we had. So, so early on, we, we were going by the, they kinda had websites of the, the bad states. And so, so we had that policy. And then sure enough, we had someone drive to the, you know, the most rural area to look to buy a horse, forgot all about it. And the reality of it is, is they were in the middle of nowhere. It just happened to be in Minnesota. And, and so the, it gets a little tough with regard to, you know, think of one of the the lower states in Minnesota that's nowhere near Minneapolis and you just had a grandchild born and you can't go. And it's like, this isn't any different, you know? If I'm at Ames or Gilbert, it's, it's much worse for all probability. But I don't have the answer, but, but I want us to think about is, is, could you have it, could you have it with, you know, groups of people? Maybe is a better way of setting it rather than, than geography? Because the idea is I don't know that if I went to a state that was a hotspot, but necessarily I'm in a place that, that isn't. And maybe we use this, if, this positivity rate of above something for the county we use. But when you start carving off a whole state, then, then it gets kinda tough.
I would say too.
Yeah, I, I think we're taking it too deep here. The, the whole point was let's emphasize that it's be wise with our travel, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Try to minimize it. And I would say a bigger issue, and it's kind of in there, but it may not be in the handbook is, I didn't see it, but Lindsay or maybe Ashley, are we talking about screening for the staff in the handbook? Because all of this starts with, don't come to work sick, right? And so I just, and just one comment to the handbook, page 31 references, don't come to work sick, but we don't explicitly talk about the screening process that we're expecting our students to do. Do we have that anywhere in the employee handbook?
One of the things, and Ashley, you can jump in here too. One of the things, and we talked about this as a board and as an administrative team and what have you, we've talked about, our expectation for any of our staff members is going to be that they will make sure that they, and I'm not, I don't think I'm answering his questions completely, that we're gonna do temperature checks to make sure that's a kind of a first round to, to screen something out. The same thing will be asked if, for our parents to do that for the students. Did you have anything as far as any, any screening? I mean, we have, we're not gonna do COVID testing or anything like that. And that's not what he was asking. Anything that you wanna add to that?
We were talking about getting the governor's matrix of high-risk symptoms and low-risk symptoms out to people and having kinda like what Jeff said about the questions that you have or ask when you go to the doctor. But getting publication out to our patrons and staff to say, if your child does have a temperature of 100.4, these are the things to consider and things like that. And we talked about getting that out to our staff in the next few days of what that looks like and the expectation to take temperatures at home.
I think, I think we have it in the plan. I think that's clearly marked. It's just not in the handbook. And I think that's what Tyler was saying is.
Yeah, and I'm wondering if, if in the handbook, I just put the webs, the link to where that information is, where the documents are. I think it's just a matter of including a link to take the employees to that, knowing that those documents can change.
Yeah.
And then, so if I put that link, we can update the documents and it'll always be current. I think that's what we need is the link to where these documents. And we can always put more documents as they arrive. But I'll include a link on page 31 that we, that goes to that site where they can get those documents. And you can, you know, that way it'll be always updated.
Ashley, did Laura wanna share? Sorry, there's some information, like Laura and I met for about an hour and a half today and we added a doc in there about, you know, how do you go through this? Building principal said, hey, if we come in here and something happens anytime, but especially the first day, we wanna be prepared, we wanna be ready to go. So we have a flow chart that we talked about, draft, would you say? Were you talking about this one though? Is that the one that you were?
It's very similar, but it listed out the highs and the lows. And that's on the one that I handed her. I handed you that one, I finished that one up too. And this one here was down very simple for the teachers, you know, they have any of these. And then my flow chart here for the health office is like if my, I have a health associate versus a nurse or a health, they kinda know what to do, you know, what you wanna ask.
So do we have, I get all this, I get it's all good information. Do we have a systematic process that says, the first time this happens, do we contact her with the building principal, then we get to the nurses? Or what, do we have a systematic process for when this happens?
Yes, that's the other flow chart we were talking about.
Can, can we jump to that one? I, I don't mean to jump around, but I wanna, I wanna hear this. This is, cause this is gonna happen and we don't, we as a board don't need to know every person about being sick and that. We just wanna, I wanna make sure there's a process.
There it is.
That we treat this the same going through.
We have a new drop-in.
Yep, yep, we have a new drop-in.
This is what I think that you're asking Jeff. Take a look at that and see, and right now there's a blank in there. The reason there's a blank in there for the point person, Ashley is our COVID or basically mitigation point person. This one is a little bit different because this person is who Public Health will call and they'll call anytime, like on the weekends and, and I, whatever. And say, you have a student that is basically tested positive. Now we need to talk and see where it is, what building they're in, and we wanna see the seating charts. Would that be right Laura?
Right, but they want, they're gonna do all the contact calling, the Iowa Department. As of now, they're doing all this contact, contact. So our responsibility is to gathering who those contacts at school are for them. And so they will call the parent to find out the context that they might have outside the school and work with them. They will also, we will be providing through encrypted email, the names and numbers of the context. So having that person in that building would have, either the principal would designate a person to help him to gather that. That's why it's not official, we filled in as that person. Who those contacts are and where they sat, where they recessed, the sports, the lunch and the classroom. Would it be a whole classroom that is within the six feet for 15 minutes? So it might not be a whole classroom, right? Because it would only be the five around me or, you know, the ones that are closer.
Six feet and 15 minutes.
Yeah, make sure we have, make sure we have a good process because you're, you're gonna do it. It's just a matter of when.
And I want you to know, and so I'm not catching anyone off guard. The building principals have not had even a chance to see this, so, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanna make sure everybody heard what you said.
The building principals have not had a chance to see this, so we'll, we'll vet this a little bit more. What I just said to Laura when she came in today is, let's sit down and get a flow chart so that if Mike Danielson has something happen in the middle school, he can pick this thing up and say, here's what I need to do. And I'm just picking on Mike, it could be any of them.
That's exactly what we need.
But we need to have that. And then the next thing is, we're gonna have a communications, a template that says, okay, this, you know, happened at the elementary, Stacy's building. This is the route we're gonna follow. And then we're gonna make sure that we communicate that to our best ability, what we can communicate.
But it's a repeatable process. What happens in the high school in a sense, happens the same way that it happens in the middle.
It's a systematic process.
It happens the same way. We don't have people bypassing it or screwing it.
Yeah, the only thing I would, the only thing I'd tell you is I'd never, I would never forego contacting somebody because the state's gonna do it. Cause it's been my experience, if you want something screwed up, let the state do it. So don't trust anybody else to do something that's gotta be done. You know, just let's, let's be forthcoming about it, let's do what's right.
One thing that's nice about Laura's situation is she's had training on the contact tracing. So she has a background in that too. If we need to, you know, lean on her a little bit, we can do that.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. And I don't mean that meanly.
No, I don't think they got, they got a lot of people.
Well, and right away when you can say, hey, if you can identify the people that have been within six feet for over 15 minutes, you know, we want, we wanna get them home as soon as possible.
I think that these guys, I'm confident that these guys, they have a plan in place. There are very strict requirements about communicating health issues, federal requirements that I know that they're aware of. But your point is, I think, very clear that yes, we need to have this repeatable process. It's not, it's not different between buildings that we take into consideration privacy.
Do we have that Jeff? Do we have that?
HIPAA is a.
No, but I mean, do we have that? Do you have that now?
I think he's, that's what we're saying, is he's working on that.
That's what we're working on right now.
They're working on that process. They've got, I think, pieces.
And that's what, you're echoing the same thing that every one of those building administrators said in our meeting the other day. Give me something that I can go ahead and if this happens, what's our, what's our game plan?
Now, Gail on the.
We just can't wing it with a certification.
No, I know, I'm with you.
Getting back to Tyler's question is, is do we think we need to have that, that temperature check broke out separately so that they know that? Because I might not click on the link.
I would agree with Tyler. I think we need to be on there. If it's on our, if it's on our kids, if they're getting screened every day, so should the teachers. I don't care if you do it with each other.
That's the practice.
You teach across all, I mean, we share, you know?
And we're expecting everybody to do that at home. Like kids and.
Right.
That isn't, like, that isn't, I think, being debated, that that doesn't need to happen. It's just about where we document it.
Where we talk about it. That's a good point.
It's where we document it because that's a part of the safety mitigation. I think they made that really, they did a good job of making that clear.
My only question would just be is, do we need to highlight that one thing outside of that? Hey, we want everybody's taking their temperature before they come to school and here's the other things that you need to.
And then here's, and let's consider that, let's do, let's look at that Gail, that part of that. Here's additional, look at this link for additional.
Yeah, and if there's any other ones that we say are mission critical, cause that ain't gonna change.
Right.
You know, so if you, if you wanna pull out some of the ones that are mission critical, that we, we wanna highlight this and really have it pulled to the forefront. It doesn't mean that the whole link doesn't need to be there, but feel free to be like, this didn't change in this semester, so we might as well highlight it.
That's a good point. You guys raise a good point.
Yeah, we think it's one of our fundamental stop points, so we wanna highlight it.
Yep, you guys raise a very good point. So we'll just make sure we communicate.
Laura, I think we need to get together on that because I'm not the health specialist on that or Ashley, somebody knows, so we can, I, cause this document needs to go out soon. Okay, thanks.
And I think from a standpoint of us, our knowledge for the board, I think it's automatically gotta go from you to the president. And if she thinks we need to know or whoever the president is can share the rest of the board.
Yeah, I think that'll be a part of that. I, I would expect that communication, we were talking about the communication of, now we've got something, we figured out what it is and here's our action. I would, I would hope that that would extend out to the, to the board. Again, no identifying information.
Just the weekly update would be good.
The weekly update of.
It might, yeah, weekly might be a little late, but yes, as they occur. I think, well, let's think about that because I think that, please don't forget that we'll be getting questions as well. And it's important for us to know just enough to be able to answer accurately. Okay?
Another thing that was mentioned, and we know that we, you can read and it's become a political game as far as the mask. Our policy is that our kids are gonna come in and they're gonna have some type of face covering. That's probably a better way to say it. That we know that six through 12, they're gonna be provided a mask. If you're a student, actually two. If they're a staff member, they're gonna be, I think Lynn surveyed the staff members and said, here are some options as far as masks that we're providing as a district. We wanna make it safe. We wanna make sure that you feel good about coming back. If I'm in the intermediate or the elementary, they're going to go with the shields. And some of them even, I think even up to the middle school, they have like a mask. Mike, do you guys have some of those with, help me out, is it the cutout? Go ahead, Ashley.
Yeah, with the mouth cut out, we had, that was an option too. And we have some of those for some students.
Okay. Not with the mouth cut out.
It's really clear.
Clear, so you can see how people.
Cause that kind of defeats the purpose.
We have a couple of students hard of hearing who rely on reading lips from a distance and stuff.
So what, what I would like to do is, if you can go to the face covering one, I don't know if you, it's basically, we've, we have talked to legal counsel about this. We're, we're trying.
Which one is that?
That one. 401.3.
One of the slides that, that we have, it, some information is, here's what the, what we've said on the buses and things like that. But below it, we've put our expectations that are out there. And that, you know, we expect the, the students to follow this just like we expect the students to wear shoes when they come into the building. I mean, it's a health situation. The question I think was asked is, and I know some of you that are sitting over there, you're gonna have the challenge of someone's gonna, you know, say, well, I don't want to do this. Our expectation in our district is that we're gonna have some type of face covering. And if that, you know, we're gonna, we talk about it in here, but we wanna make sure that, you know, if that doesn't happen, we work with the student. We have maybe a parent meeting. But if, if you just said that we're not gonna do that, then we have to look at another alternative for that and remote could be one of those. I'm just saying that if there's a question about if the, if there's gonna be backing there, I heard from the board that this is what we're gonna do and I agree with you. And I wanna make sure that the administrators feel that they have the backing there.
I, I don't think we're putting people out when you can sit in a classroom like this. If we can design our classrooms like we're meeting here today, you know, moving in the hallway to get here, I, I don't think we're asking a lot.
That's when they're gonna have to argue.
I don't, and I don't think that this is not, this is not indicative of what a classroom will look like. It will not be six feet.
No, all your classes are doing, but I meant with the flexi glass.
No, we can go next door.
We need to be clear that, that this will be a lot of the day, right? A lot of the day. But when there are opportunities, and that's what they highlighted here, the bulleted items, when there are opportunities and when it meets the guidelines, they're, you know, that's.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go here again. I think the girls, the, and I don't, the ladies that run the little kids, I think they're gonna have a tougher, tougher play.
Yeah.
And, and I think you're gonna have to give them more leniency. And I don't think it's gonna look like intermediate and it's not gonna look like high school the way their school is. There's no way with those kids.
But I'll, I'll, I'll answer that in a way.
When they, when they talk, have their building conversations.
Right, I, I think that, that if you take a look at the intermediate and the elementary, it is gonna be a little bit different. I agree with you Jeff, but I think that those administrators are gonna do a great job But I think that those administrators are going to do a great job of educating those kids and with their teachers and their staff about why this is important. I mean, we're not doing this just because we think it's some crazy thing that we want to do here. We're doing this because we want to make sure it's.
That's, and I agree with that. I think what I'm saying is, the difference in the age of the students is going to be the big difference in what goes on.
Yep.
So I don't, there's no doubt in my mind that those two can do it.
Yep.
But I think, I don't think that it's going to look the same as for Vic and Mike as it does for them.
Do you guys, and I'm sorry I'm taking so long, but do you guys have anything as far as Amy or Stacy? From your standpoint, I know that I've talked to you about what your shields are going to be. Do you have any comments that you want to make towards Jeff's comment? It will, it will be a little bit different.
No, I think the difference, I think the difference that we see at the elementary and the intermediate is, these are behaviors we'll have to spend more time teaching. Whereas at the high school, you can say, put on a mask, and they're going to put on a mask. So we just realized, just like we know I'm going to have some four-year-olds that aren't going to tolerate the face shield very well. You know, we've got lots of plans in place to think about, you know, getting different options of face shields and face masks and just so we, but we, you know, as the parents who called and talked to me have expressed some of those concerns. It's like any behavior. It's like sitting still, it's like raising your hand, we teach it. And so I think that's just really, that'll be our process. And as we know it's learning, kids will make mistakes, and we'll work on it.
And I think that if I'm right, if I'm a, I'm a parent, right? I think my kids are old enough to understand this. But I think when you were talking about discipline, right, there's, our schools have always done a good job of understanding the difference between somebody who's just maybe misunderstood something and needs to just be corrected versus a situation where somebody's maybe choosing not to follow the rules.
Right, and I agree. Again, I'm going to keep going, I'm taking a lot of time. The last one is basically, what was the question about? What are the current understanding for the matrix that the board will use? I mean, considering if a COVID positive student is in the school, how much latitude do we have? Do we work with the district nurse? And thanks Laura for coming in. And do we have a COVID point person that we're working with? Ashley and just a little bit will be introduced as that. But yes, and I want you to look at, can you bring this one up?
Which number, is that the 404?
This is the one that says, return to learn reopening Iowa schools safely and responsibly.
I'm not sure if that's in there. I don't think it's in there.
See that.
Oh, it isn't.
But it's on the website, isn't it?
Yes. Well, I think so. What this did was, this was the, when the state talked about if it's zero to 5% positivity, then you can, what, what are the suggestions that they have for it?
Yeah, it's in there, so it's 4.01.1, and then it's on page, page one. Or you got to scroll down about, oh gosh, you got to scroll down four or five pages past those forms.
Yeah, that's the document that the.
Yeah, I think that's pretty.
Yep, that's the document that the state put forward.
There it is, there it is.
Yep, thanks, John.
This is the one that you hear on the news where some schools are saying, we're not going to follow what the governor said, and we're going to do something different. This is what the governor has come out with, and I don't want to get into the battle of who's right and who's wrong there. This is what the governor has said for the criteria as far as the transmission. If you take a look at it, none to minimal is a zero to 5% positivity. And then you can look at minimum to moderate, substantial, and then substantially uncontrolled. Laura, if a person wants to find this, do you know where they can find that positivity rate?
It was, if you go on, I go on daily, the iowadepartmentpublichealth.org, and then they say percent analysis for school districts. So you can click and see the positivity and the whole picture of your state, and you can see how many cases.
Where you add on that?
Yeah, I do it daily. And then if you scroll down, and you can see, and you can click on Amy, which is Story County, and it'll say 2%. Henry Gilbert, that says like 2%, we did 2% or 3% for us.
Amy, did you have something, was it an easier place to find it?
But is the Vada County that's backing that up then? Is that county data?
Yeah, it does say we're supposed to follow county.
It's by Story County. So they take the Story County and how many school districts and how many of those schools, how many buildings they have, and the counts for the last two weeks of those Story County, and then they do their calculations. So I'm not prepared to look like how we get there, 2%.
Okay, because my, my big question just would be, are we talking positivity rates for our buildings? Or are we talking the positivity rate for the county? So I think we got to have a serious discussion, just because Iowa State University is here.
And John, that's something interesting that you said. So you know, the governor has been doing this, the press here, the press conferences. I think, and she hasn't just directly addressed Iowa State. But I think that these numbers are there, and what they're trying to do is, this is a starting point. I feel like I'm just regurgitating this, but it's a, it's a starting point. And I think they always, they want you to reach out, and there's a point of this and where we will reach out to them through our public health. And then that's when you begin to look at maybe more details about it. Is this an outbreak in a nursing home? Is this the result of this? Like, we're going to start looking at more specifics to determine, does the school close or does it not?
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, it's going to happen at Iowa State University. And so when we blow past 20% because a whole bunch of kids are getting tested at Iowa State University, if we don't, if we don't have that figured out now, I mean, we've, we just, we need to have it figured out, and I don't have the answer. But I'm just saying, I think it's going to happen. And so I don't want us to be making this under duress when we can be making it right now as to what do we think our response should be to a plus 20 in Story County that's confined to a bunch of college kids, or that we think it's a bunch of college kids.
And to your point, though, John, it's, it's that plus 10% absenteeism in your school.
Which to me is just more important, having positivity.
Okay, and I'm just worried, we'll just drive with the one.
No, no, it's the both.
How many times have you, since you've been here, have you had 10%? Twice, and that was with the flu, I know. But twice we've had to report to the state of, as far as 10%.
Okay. Well, that makes, that does make me feel a lot better.
Yeah, and if we get 10% absenteeism, I mean, we've got a problem. Let's be honest. If we got that because of COVID, there's, we're going to be, there's an issue.
Okay, no, and then that, that works.
I think if we're following Iowa State's release of first wave of testing, and the first 3,000 who were tested on day one of campus move-ins, they were 2.2%.
That was really good.
And they are not releasing any other numbers, though, until Friday.
Well, our county number today is 7%.
Yeah.
County number, right?
County is 7%.
But I think it's, one thing that I think is important to call out here, though, and somebody can help me answer this. This guidance is for closing a building or a district. There is still, I don't believe we have to go through all of these. And if, in fact, we were to do contact tracing, somebody was ill in a school in a district, a classroom, and for some reason it was such that the whole class was impacted. That can happen without this kind of.
Without the whole district going down, yeah.
Yes.
Or, or I mean, like, we can do that on our own, right?
I think, too, when you look at the state's percentages.
They're nodding.
Before this was out, and we were going by what Story County Public Health told us, there was way less. But I think that what some of you have said, when you think about where is that happening? And that is something that Story County, when we had that conversation with us, with them, they said, you know, if you know that there's an outbreak at a care facility, and that has nothing to do with, I mean, it's not even near us, you got to take those things into consideration. But the state did put that, that at a much higher percentage than what the county did. And I think that's probably what some, why some districts are going that route. I'm not, I'm not saying you should do what, I'm not, I'm just saying that as.
I think those press, they've been having conversations, and I think that both, maybe I'd say both sides, I hate to say it that way, but are kind of coming to this understanding that these are conversations that are going to have to happen about the specifics of your county. Because our county is not the same as.
Well, I think adding the 10% of, we're realizing it here, that's the part that I have the most concern.
Yeah.
Is that it was, it was happening boots on the ground inside the schools versus.
And keep in mind, it's absenteeism, another thing to point out. Not that many people are sick with COVID, but that many people are absent, whether they're quarantining or something like that.
And it also doesn't take into account your staff absenteeism. It only, it only addresses student absenteeism. And another, one other just piece to that, like, we are actually in two counties. We are in Story and Boone. So that's, I mean, that's another, just another layer to the, that's just to add where. And additionally, you can see the age breakout for, for the county. So if you go to that site, you can see.
I do feel like, I know that there's been a lot of talk about this, but I do feel like there's a lot more information here than there was before. It will just be, as we go, we're going to get better at understanding what are the characteristics of our county. And I mean, I'm so thankful that we have people who are going to be concentrating on this, you know, and paying attention, Lynn and Ashley, because it's not something you want to have to learn every day, you know? I think you're going to gain knowledge as we do this.
John's concern is legit.
It's legit.
No, you answered, you answered what I said, and if we can go building by building, that's even better, right? The high schools have an over 10% of absenteeism, but it doesn't mean that we're going to close down all the schools that aren't having those problems and so.
And that 10% is that district-wide, Laura?
It's to close for the district. You know, we talked, I would say, when we talked, we spoke with Sherri Zook from Public Health three times, was it, yesterday or the day before?
Yeah.
Last conference, my day. But in one of our conversations, she talked about how, well, if it were a classroom, you know, how would that be? And it wouldn't necess, because we asked, like, is there a threshold to say a whole class would need to go remote? And she said, you know, after multiple cases, then the epidemiologists from Public Health would get involved. But that 10% was a district number, not a building number.
No.
And we have a kid a little bit, but we, I think I have the Story County Public Health on speed dial. They, you know, they, and they're helpful. We're doing it, we're asking questions, and we're doing the things we need to. I'm just going to go through, keep, just a couple of other things. Oh, go ahead.
One.
Sorry, just. No, that's fine.
Not to belabor the conversation, but just to be clear. My understanding is, these are recommendations, and that the county cannot come in and shut us down. These are recommendations, and we're working with the county, but ultimately, it is the board's decision on what we do. Is that, is that everybody's understanding, or do we see that differently?
No, you're exactly right, Tyler.
I think that's worth, go ahead.
So all, the only reason I bring that up is, I agree, John, we need to be thinking through this. I would really like the admin team, Lindsay, to be thinking through that. But ultimately, it's going to be the board's decision, and these are guidelines. And the governor's approach is, we're onsite until we request to go virtual. And so I think we need to be thinking that way. And with regard to what's this percentage, what's that? We're going to have to get into this, and it's going to be one where we try to understand what are our numbers. And so I think Deb, you brought that up, or somebody brought it up earlier. I'd like to encourage us to really get some reporting out that the board gets. And it might be good to just start right now that weekly, we know what positivity rate is for the county, both Boone and Story, now that you bring that up. But allow us to then also know, well, what's our absenteeism as we get into this? So I think it'll be important for the board to know that. And I think it also is important that we know the absenteeism at the building level. Because I think it might, we might be presented with situations where we say, the high school is at this threshold, but not, not the other three buildings. But I just encourage us to be thinking of these as recommendations. Ultimately, it's our decision, and for me, as a board member, I want to want to see data fairly regularly.
I think that's easy for, that the information that he's asking for, we can make sure that you have that on a weekly basis, so you can see where is Story County? Where is Boone County? What's the rate that we're talking about, positivity rate? And we'll make sure, if there's something that you're not getting, that you say, darn it, why didn't you give me this? Don't, just let me know. We want to try to put as much stuff into your hands as possible, so that we're making the best decisions possible.
While that will be important is, 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 there's going to be a lot, there's going to be a lot of pressure when the rate, when the things start coming up. So when we can say, we're tracking positivity, and we're tracking absenteeism, and we haven't hit our trips yet, that's going to be powerful, because that's going to be everybody, okay, they're on it. They're on top of this, they're watching it, they know where it's at. And so it's really going to be important that we can communicate that to the families, because that's going to be everybody's, okay, there's a process. This isn't just a willy-nilly thing. And I think it will help us by having kind of some, some ideas of, okay, we need, we need to go to, okay, we're green, we're yellow, we're red. We need, we need to start talking about this.
Yeah.
I think that's fine, and I agree, Tyler. But I think we should all get the information and we go through Deb. I don't want five people going to the administrators. I want the administrators to know we have their back, we need them to do their job, and we need to stay out of it. I think we need reported. If we want to have an issue with the administrators or with Lindsay, I think we use Deb as our, as our person to go to.
Well, I disagree a little bit, Jeff. It's my understanding, and we haven't gotten to it yet, but we got a COVID mitigation point person.
We can go to her.
Well, that'd be fine, too, but I don't think it should be us.
What I'm saying, Jeff, is we need to get the data. So all I'm asking for is weekly, and if needed, be a daily update on what, where are we tracking? To John's point, I think all, all the board members better feel comfortable with where we are relative to COVID. Because we're going to have COVID positives, and initially, that's going to stress people out. But this recommendation from the state says, you're going to have positives, but that doesn't shut your school down.
Right, I agree. I just don't think we need to, as board members, micromanage. We have to micromanage this situation. We got to be able to do it.
It's, it's not micromanaging.
Yeah, Tyler, we get it, we're going to get, we're going to get facts, and we're going to keep them. All I asked is, after we get the facts, that we go through Deb.
Well, and here's what I would like to propose. It's not, I don't think that, I don't think we're talking different things here. First of all, during the course of school, when school is in session, these guys are busy. They don't need everybody going to them individually. And I think that's a point that you're making. We also have a mitigation person, and that's awesome, and possibly someone else. I would say, let's get a report, some kind of a format in, in line here with a report that shows statistics, and let's start doing that now. And let's make sure that that's a format that's, we all understand and can, we feel comfortable interpreting, okay?
That's fair.
Let's do that, and let's start getting data there. That needs to go directly to the board members. That doesn't come through me. That goes directly to all of the board members. If you have specific questions about something that's happening, I would suggest that maybe that communication plan tells where we can go for that. Should it be the point person? Should it be Lindsay? But of course, we don't want to disrupt the daily activities of school, right? And we want them to focus, and we don't want to get everybody going 10 different ways. But let's do, do you, are you in agreement? I'm not trying to fundamentally change how we talk. People live right by each other. We talk, right? But let's make sure that we have a format and a report that's processed that we can agree to before school starts. And let's get that data, and let's get used to looking at it, let's get used to it, and then go from there. But let's not change that format then, unless we agree to do that by the board.
And I like green, yellow, and red, too. Let's, let's say, tentatively, these are green, this is yellow, this is red.
Let's make it as reader-friendly, but let's, I agree to work on that, and maybe Tyler, I don't know, somebody else. We'll, we'll get that out, and let's get people agreeing to this is the format. I get what it means. I'm accountable for it. Not me, we're all accountable for it. Let's go from there. Is that, is that?
That's agreeable.
Okay.
That's agreeable.
Tyler, is that, I mean, I think that's what, and John, Jeff, sorry.
Yeah, 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 we're good. We're saying the same thing.
I think you're saying the same thing.
I mean, we're right, we need the information. There's no doubt about that.
I think you're talking about specific questions. Maybe you have on a Monday, you get a call, and you just go right to Mike or somebody. Let's be careful about.
I know, I know that we're taking a long time on this. But this is, I'm sorry. This is important things that I want to make sure that you know, because someone's going to stop you in, out at the Wendy's and say, hey, you know, what's, what's happening here? And you, you got to be able to, you know, say what's going on.
Yeah.
That page three, someone was asking about the high risk and low risk. You can see where that's at. I'm going to let you take a look at the, the rest of that information that's there as far as what the state has provided. Deb, or not Deb, excuse me, Laura has done some really nice things with the Health and Safety Committee. There's some information that talks about, you know, what, what are some of the things as far as the symptoms? We talked about a flow chart and we talked about we're having this as a flow chart so that those building principals can have something in their hands. And then there's another document that, I can't remember who's in my office this morning, I think Laura was and maybe Gail. We were going over and just the difference between isolation and quarantine. And you wanted to look at that. You wanted to make sure that you understand what, what's happening there. And we were going to check and see to make sure that if there are any questions, that we get those answered. All right? That's, that's out there. I wanted to make sure that we at least tried to answer some of those questions. Did those questions get answered as far as what you were hoping to hear from the board members?
I think it's helped. I think you're going to talk about the point person.
I hope Ashley's still going to be the point person. I'm kidding.
Tyler, I want, you, I want to be conscious of the fact that, are you, do you have any other questions about that maybe, or just in general about the district level before we dive into maybe more specifics?
The only question I would have is back to the face coverings. If the principals are all comfortable with that, and when they're comfortable, they know how they're going to, what, defend it? So that we can defend, so that Lindsay can defend you and we can defend Lindsay? Because my, my guess is there will be some pushback.
Again, we should have a systematic process.
If the principal's comfortable with it.
Are you guys comfortable with what we put out in there? You, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. If not, let me know.
That's a good question though.
There will be, there will be some challenge.
Yes, and you do need to understand that you have support.
One of the things that we talked about doing was, I'll take your direction, Deb. We talked about maybe having each of the building principals just kind of give a update as far as a review about where they're at in their building. Is that what you wanted?
Does that, I think that's, I think that's helpful. And I know people are listening on the phone or they might still be on.
Hey, real quick, I got a text that says the doors are locked and YouTube is not working. I don't know what.
YouTube isn't working?
That's the text I just got.
Is it possible that?
Is it possible that YouTube isn't working?
I don't know.
YouTube's working now.
Okay. It's working now.
Someone's at the door, I think, too.
Okay.
If it's all right, Deb, we're going to just start out, maybe start out with Stacy and just kind of go around and they can just give a brief report.
Yeah.
Stacy, you want to just kind of share your end?
So just in terms of kind of mitigation types of things, Ashley and I have measured all the three of our classrooms out, so we have them all set up and marked, so the teachers have that. We work with our teachers. Our face shields are here, you already will wear that. I believe all my plexiglass barriers for student desks and teacher desks are in because they're all sitting in my gym. And then we are still kind of working, we're working on the plexiglass for lunch tables and teacher tables. So if a teacher is going to be working with a small group, so those are still in the works. We've worked through and have our systems established for arrival and dismissal. And we're now just kind of working on how to cover assigning supervision to all of that. In terms of how we've worked with our staff, like I said, on a one-on-one basis, we've met with each of them and measured out their classrooms. We did have a whole staff Zoom meeting right after our board meeting, the last time where we kind of shared out. We showed our 38-point page points of light about all the things that we've, that will be our plans and procedures. We did follow up with the FAQ because even though Ashley and I thought, we had thought of every single thing under the sun, we actually came, they came up with a few things we didn't. So that was good. And then we're just really working with teachers on what do you need more of? What are, you know, equipment and supply? You know, a lot of them are like, I only have so many of this, you know, so many dice, so many toys, so many this. So really working on how to get that so they have enough to, so kids don't have to share as much. You know, there's still going to be some element of sharing, but hopefully within our small cohorts rather than everybody touching all the same things. In terms of remote learning, we do, based on our numbers, and I know we still have until the 16th for that, but we do have enough for dedicated remote teachers at each of our grade levels. And so that will help in terms of the workload for different teachers and the teams. We've also created a draft schedule for the remote teachers to use. We're kind of vetting that a little bit, talking through and seeing how that works. All teachers have been assigned a seesaw and I believe all of my teachers have gone on and started at least messing around with it a little bit, which that will be our online platform in preschool for seventh grade. For parents, I have, if you have a preschool, kindergarten, or first grader, and I think the preschool one might be waiting on emails, but our preschool, our kindergarten and first grade, they've already sent out, typically by August 1st, they send out that letter that says, hey, I'm your teacher, be excited. We wanted to still have something go out, but we aren't prepared to say who the classroom teachers are yet. And so they just sent out like, hey, this is what first grade's going to look like, this is what kindergarten's going to look like. So I have second grades yet to send out in preschools just because we don't have those kiddos on infinite campus because they weren't in our district before. So we're waiting until we get most of those kids registered. And then, like I said, working on revising our class list a little bit based on the numbers who chose remote or homeschool. And we are currently working on sending out a sign up. We will do a back-to-school event. It will not look like, quite like it has in the past. So our plan is that from, for us at the elementary, from 1 to 6:30, we'll have three kiddos at a time can sign up and they can bring two parents. And then that way, we kind of are limiting how many people are in a classroom at a time. But we want them to get a chance, the kids to see what the room will look like, drop off supplies that they have, you know, get familiar. The teachers, the parents will be able to ask the teachers some questions. So kind of back to school night, but just in a smaller group setting at each time.
Quick, Stacy, you said there's going to be one per grade then? You'll have a remote per grade level then in your preschool? Okay, good. What about that, those empty classrooms? I mean, since we'll have some empty classrooms now?
Well, I think most of our plans would be that the classroom teacher, the remote teacher is teaching from that environment. So they may still be using their whiteboard. We may use it for things like if, right now, because one of our biggest issues is where our staff member's going to eat, since we don't have access to a lounge. So we may, you know, use some of those spaces for that.
Yeah, I just, I know with the spaces being, you know, luxury now, I just didn't know if there was ways to utilize the additional space, but.
Yeah, I think the other thing we have to also know is we're going to have to reevaluate our plan in October based on how many people come back. So we're really not messing too much, I mean, most of those rooms are actually set up, actually, they all are set up.
That's right.
So we're not going to try and rock too many boats just in case. Because I would say the majority of people who chose remote at the elementary level said they want to evaluate in October. They weren't committing to this semester at this point.
Overall, you feel good though? I'll ask all the admin the same question. You guys all feel good? Till last morning, so I want to make sure everybody's.
I mean, I privately appreciate that. The detail of that, that, I mean, that's good to know that we're figuring out some of that stuff with that. So I didn't, I didn't realize, and I know that, what did the GEA mentioned human bandwidth? And I, I'm, I am happy, I hate the situation, but I am glad that we are not maybe in that situation where we're not able to pull a teacher aside. Did it, I, my kids are too old for, for the supply lists, but did we have to change those and get those out, like amended supply lists? Or were those the same as they were?
They stayed the same. I think that would be more of a procedure change in a classroom. Because in the past, you know, everybody bring markers and then they just throw the markers in a one big bucket and that's, now they'll just keep them all on their own.
Cool.
And we may have to order some additional supplies just to make sure, because sometimes the community place things stretch a little better than they do when one kiddo has them. Especially if your kiddo was like Stacy Edwards and lost every cram by October 28.
Awesome.
Stacy, I know that we told you to, go to Lutheran Church and make it a bunch of masks. Have they told you that yet? So you'll have a bunch of extra masks too, even beyond the two they're providing for kids. So there'll, there'll be plenty of masks for everybody.
And that's, I think that's true for all the.
All the, yeah, all the ones. I know they're just focusing on the little ones first and then they're going to work their way up to the larger ones, so.
Do you guys, as board members, have any more questions for Stacy? Let's move over to Amy.
Is Tyler still on? He's just.
She's going to stand up and make a presentation here.
Hello.
So feeling better every day about things. Today, we solidified quite a few more remote learner commitments, which that's kind of been a big thing on our plate right now, trying to figure out the best way to provide the instruction through which teachers, ideally, if we could have dedicated one, I think that's what we were going, we were hoping for, but just haven't had as many numbers as we had thought. But got some more today and got some clarification, I think. Our plan moving forward, a meeting with each grade level and our specials team tomorrow to look at the numbers and talk through options on where they feel most comfortable. Three options they have is to go ahead and dedicate one teacher. Will be a little higher in some of their classrooms, but I think right now it looks manageable. Option two is that we can divide the contents. So with five teachers, there's five content areas. They can each be responsible for one of the content areas for the remote learners. And then option three that they can choose from, which I think two of the three right now we're probably leaning towards is dedicating one homeroom as our online remote learners. So let's say, for example, Mrs. Nace's class in third grade, if she is the remote learner teacher, she would start her day with no kids in her classroom, but that's her dedicated time to post things, touch base, Zoom, record lessons, provide feedback. And then when they, her and Mrs. Stevenson switch, Mrs. Stevenson's class, when they go to Mrs. Nace for the math and science, and Mrs. Stevenson would have an empty classroom, but that would be her time then for the reading and language arts. So I think, I think we're going to be able to make that work and I think that is probably the most manageable. I'm going to talk with each group, each grade level tomorrow on where they are feeling the most comfortable. Because it's about what they are feeling and how we can deliver to our kids. As far as classroom setup, Melissa Jones has been a huge help, similar to Ashley. She met with almost all of them in the last few days to help them set up their rooms, measure how can we get the most, what makes the most sense. So she did that for them and me. So that was really good. I think we're sitting good and very thankful that our media, our rooms are the most generous of the district. So all the times I thought maybe I should switch to middle school, I'm going to stay, but no. Lunch and recess plans are falling right into place. We're going to move to six lunch shifts instead of our three, so we'll eat at half capacity. So all of our kids will eat in the commons spaced out, which I think will be good for our kids and our teachers to give just a break of being in the classroom. So we have that worked out with the lunch recess rotation. Again, having sat down with all the duties to make sure and get all this covered, but we'll figure that out as we, as we go. And then our morning and dismissal routines, I think we've got those pretty solidified too. And like Stacy said, just when I think I've thought through everything, somebody thinks of something, which I think is going to be the name of the game this year, which is great. I think we're just always actually thinking and figuring things out. So we've got a good team. Everybody seems very flexible. I know I've got teachers that are sad because their classroom isn't looking like they have had it look in the past. But I just reminded them again that the important thing is that for those that are comfortable, we're getting their kid, we're getting our kids back in their room and, and that's what our kids want, that's what those parents want that are coming back on site and we'll be there ready for them. Any other, any questions for me?
Are they, will they have like recess?
Yeah.
You said that, is that a special or is that just a thing?
No, so recess will be outside. Again, I'm fortunate, I've got that whole field.
That just goes on.
So we're, we'll rotate, they won't have free rein of wherever they want to go. We'll rotate like Monday, this is your area, Tuesday, this is your area. So we'll rotate that so they can stay in their cohorts without contact tracing with the team. So again, not probably what everybody would want, but at least we're getting them outside. Space, well, yeah, I think if, things are falling into place the best they can in the situation's ever.
A quick question, I guess, for Carrie. Have we, what is our percentage of hearing back from the families? Are we up to 100% yet or real close?
We are at, oh, we are like within 10.
Okay, I figured, I knew, I figured we were close.
We are within, Lindsay and I talked this afternoon about it.
Yeah, we did.
And it's less than 10.
Okay, awesome. Great job.
What, did what, the number come in virtual versus in person?
Approximately 15%. On the survey said virtual. We are a little bit, not all people have filled that form out yet and that they're still trickling in. We have some people that said onsite, we have gone remote, and we, you know, had some people that said remote and haven't filled it out yet, so.
But that 15's in the part then?
Yeah, definitely.
So the, we get, you know, I have 42 students that have chosen remote and seven that have chosen homeschool. And I have about 350, so about 50-ish kids.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Amy? Let's slide over to the middle school, Mike.
I'll stand up too, so you guys can see me. So most classrooms are set up, have gone through and done that. We retrofitted two of our existing water fountains with bottle fillers. And so that was done this week, so that was completed. They are, this isn't necessarily COVID-related, but, but they are working on the intercom system, not something you guys approved, I think, at the May meeting and are here this week working on that. I've met with all the grade level teams to talk through mitigation strategies. I have met with the music department here, the, the middle school music department to talk choir and band. We discussed some, you know, logistical things. They were going to go back and kind of think of how they wanted to do it. We don't have the space to have, you know, my choir room, I can fit, at six feet, I can fit 18 kids and he has about 60, so I can't even fit half. And so there, we're meeting next week to then come together again and say, okay, what are we going to do? How are we going to make this work? Are we going to do, you know, quartets or ensembles? Or do we just do lessons and, and not have, you know, people together just, just from space concern? So, so I should have that, I hope, finalized early next week. We, as you see, I'm fortunate, they're assembling the plexiglass barriers here. And so to get them out of the shop where they're assembling them, they've been putting them around. So I'm pretty well set with my, my barriers. I'm the only one, I think, I think there's all in our art room, there's about another thousand sitting there waiting to go out to the other buildings. I do have, I did order each grade level a set of plastic folding chairs. So we have lots of green space and so we're going to work on a system where they can have class outside if they wanted to. You know, kids could take their masks off. So each grade level will have some plastic folding chairs they can take out. I don't have a lot of shade here, but we do have a lot of space. And so that'll be something that, that we'll have a process for that they can, they can do. My numbers for, I have four, last I had checked, that were going to homeschool from the middle school and that have said that they were wanting to do remote. I have 19 at sixth grade and then I have nine at seventh grade and nine at eighth grade are, are my current numbers for kids that are committed to doing remote. Most of them are through October. Mrs. Parker, the middle school council and I are meeting tomorrow actually to start working on revamping some schedules and hopefully we'll get class schedules out to kids next week, so. The other thing we are working on tomorrow is assigning locations for lunch. My lunchroom will be, they're going to have to hold all of the kids at three feet of space. And so we're going to have to have some kids eat in the classroom and so we'll go through and identify that and assign tables where kids will eat for lunch to, not necessarily the seat, but, but the table, so.
Mike, back to your outdoor learning. Have we, have we looked at all into like a tent rental or something or something? I know there's a lot of tents that aren't being used these days.
Yes.
It looks a lot like Iowa State, doesn't it?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of a little going.
The, I did look at that and, you know, a, a lot of those aren't meant to be up in like severe weather or anything. So if there's weather rule through, we have to take it down and then bring it back up or whatever. You know, in, in an ideal world, like we'd have like an outdoor pavilion, you know, with like cemented into the ground, that was a permanent structure, right? And that might be something maybe I, I work on in the future, seeing if, if we can get something like that. You know, we have lots of, lots of green space. I wouldn't necessarily, I pointed this way, I wouldn't go this way because there's still, if we need to expand, you know, that, that's still planned. But we have lots of, of that side where we certainly could do that. the plan. But we have lots of, of that side where we certainly could do that. But, but yeah, I was curious just to see like, you know, when you rent a tent for a letting or something, how much that would cost and what that would be. And, and all of them say they're not, you know, intended to be up in, in wind or, or severe weather or anything like that. And so I, I just am afraid that would get to be more of a logistical hassle maybe than, than a benefit. But, you know, we do have the, the chairs come or at least come spread out outside.
Any other questions for Mike? Thanks for hosting.
What was the number, quick to you, on the number of kids you said at remote?
I think you said seven.
I have 19 at sixth grade and then nine at seventh grade, nine at eighth grade. That's as of, as of right now. The other thing then, and I don't know if Mr. Pizzetti is on there still or not, but he and I have started to talk about middle school athletics. He's got a plan for how to make that work. I don't believe we're really going to use the locker rooms except just, PE's not gonna use them at all. I think for athletics, he's gonna use them as a changing area, but, but I don't believe he's intending to issue PE lockers or to them. So they'll be taking the material, their, their clothing and, and equipment home at night. So I don't know if he's on there and wants to chime in on that or not. I can't know. Nope, he's in the booth, he's in there. So, so we are starting to work on some logistics with middle school athletics.
Thanks, Mike. Vic, you wanna talk about the high school?
Yeah, sounds good. There's, I wonder where to start, I guess, right? Our numbers are very similar to everybody else. Originally on the first survey that we sent out, we were sitting right around 70. It looked like today when I looked at it, we're around 47-ish or so. I'm assuming that number will go up by the deadline a little bit, but I don't really have the grade breakdown, but it seemed like it was about 15 to 20 per grade, if, if that, around 10 to 15-ish per grade. We only have three homeschoolers, but they have been homeschoolers in the past. Typically, people don't choose the homeschool option at the high school because they're not earning credits. So I will never probably have homeschoolers in that situation because if they move out of the system for a period of time, they're not earning credits and they can't graduate on time, just grades issues. So we're sitting roughly around where we thought it would be at this time. I've had a chance to meet with all of our staff members to go into their classrooms and set up their classrooms. I met with each one of them individually. It gave me an opportunity to not only talk through mitigation with them, but also talk, talk to them and, and listen to them and talk to them about their concerns and, and try to work through some of the things that we're doing and, and give them a better picture of how we can make things safer for them. I think it looks like about three fourths of our classrooms have the plexiglass. They just showed up today, so they're continuing to work on that. The custodial staff has taken on a monumentous task and have done outstanding jobs. So kudos to them for their efforts. We're still working on our lunch tables. Our lunch tables will have plexiglass dividers. By doing that, that expands our capacity in our cafeteria. Normally we feed about 260 and it's down to 120 now. So we'll have roughly four locations for lunch, plus the options of open campus, which will be announced tomorrow. I've got a video and a mitigation document that will be going out to parents tomorrow. It's all created, just ready to go. I just wanted to make sure a couple of people look at it tomorrow and make sure I have everything up to good standards before we send it out. So that'll cover a lot of the big areas of mitigation within the building. There'll also be mitigation for band and choir specifically spelled out in the documents because that is a little different at the high school level because we will be having band and choir due to the ability of to spread kids out. We're fortunate to have a beautiful big band room just built last year that allows us to spread kids six to eight foot out and to have a nine, 10 grouping and an 11, 12 grouping for both areas. We are closing the choir room and moving the choir to the auditorium because we cannot use the auditorium during this time. So the auditorium will be used as our choir room, which allows them to spread out even further and then to skip rows and be away from each other, which creates a lot more mitigation. Our instructor will be teaching from the stage, looking out toward the audience where the, where the students will be. And so we have mitigation spelled out for both band and choir because we want to mitigate aerosol particles during singing and playing instruments and things. So that's in place and that will be going out to parents tomorrow with, with the mitigation in the video that I made today. Our nurse's office, we've added a new nurse's office, so we now have two nurse's offices. We have a holding area for students that are showing signs of COVID, so they can be quarantined away from the main office and away from other students. And we have an office that will be more traditionally used for general nursing duties and things. So Laura will be, will be into that, will have opportunities to use two different areas. We met with our department leaders today to kind of start talking through remote learning with our department leaders and talk about putting together a, a remote learning handbook for our staff to use so they understand clearly what their expectations are as we continue to develop that as an admin team and, and through our, through our discussions as a, as a group at the high school. I'm trying to think, I should just think. Schedule, we've created a new schedule. We're no longer, we will no longer be running a nine-period day. We'll be running a block schedule. That will be released tomorrow to our families also. That will allow us to go from nine transitions a day down to four. So that's a big one.
Give me an example of what you mean by that.
Well, when you move, you have nine.
I get, I get all that.
Nine 42-minute periods?
Yeah.
You're transitioning between each class?
Right, right.
And if we go to a block schedule, an hour and 20, so we'll run.
Oh, I got you.
We'll run only four periods a day. Even periods one day, odd periods the next. And so then that will reduce the number of transitions. It will also reduce the number of students that our teachers seen one day. So on a nine-period day, they would see all 140 of their students. On a four-period day, they'll see 75 or 70. And so that also reduces our exposure for our staff while still meeting the number of minutes we would have by having an hour and 20 per day versus 42 minutes per day, five times a week. Does that make sense to you? Did you have a question? John, I thought you had.
No, I, I think that's, that's outstanding.
I thought you were raising your hand.
No, it just doesn't weigh with a lot of issues, so, so I think that's great.
And we did add, we did add open campus, which is new toward, you know, our building. We've not done that.
Which grades?
Nine to 12. So that'll allow students to leave during study hall. So if they're not, you know, don't need to be there, less students in the buildings is less exposure for everyone. At an hour and 20 minutes, you should be able to get out and get back to wherever you're going and then 15 minutes at lunch. So students will be able to leave during lunch and then be able to come back. So we've also created a system for students to do a grab and go lunch. So if they're leaving, they can take a grab and go lunch from our food service, take it with them and go home and eat it. So they don't have to worry about cooking at home or preparing something at home or, or spending money going out to restaurants and gas stations. It allows us to still bring in some revenue for our food service and not kind of cut them off at the legs, which we don't want to do. But we also understand trying to feed 500 and almost 50 students in an area that, we need four areas for sure and we have those, but we need some of those students to take advantage of the open campus also, just to reduce the, the load on the cafeteria during the day.
Have we had open campus for any grade?
We've had open campus for juniors and seniors in the past and we've only limited to certain times of the day. But I think we kind of have a unique situation here where we have to do some out of the box thinking. And it's a little different at the high school because I would say, you know, probably 75 to 80% of our kids drop off and they have the, the looking to leave. A lot, a very large percentage of them live in North Ames or in the North Ames area with a handful scattered around the country here and in, inside of Gilberts. So I think that will give students plenty of time to get out of the building and get back in. And of course, they can stay for study hall and they can stay for lunch. They don't have to leave. If the weather's poor or their parents don't want them to utilize that, they don't have to do that. But it's just one more thing that we can try to offer. We're still working out some of the bugs with the remote learning because that will be a little different at the high school. We won't have the ability to use a dedicated teacher because of highly qualified certifications related to issuing credit and things. So that's gonna look a little different at the high school and we'll be managing both in-person and in, online presence as will all the other buildings in, in different ways. So it's just gonna look a little different at the high school. Our drinking fountains have been converted to bottle fillers. I almost got mics installed the other day. Mine are back ordered, but they showed them to install mine, that they were actual mics. So they had to take them down and take them to the mics building. Mine are coming in in a few weeks. So we'll have bottle fillers on both floors and then about five or six different locations throughout the building, so.
Vic, did I read that if you opt for remote learning, you have the option to come back for one class?
Yes, we had, we've had plenty of discussion about what that could look like. And we have several classes that are very difficult to do in a remote learning environment.
Yeah.
And so we thought it might be best to allow students that are fully remote to come to the building for one class. So they can choose the class of their choice. And there are some classes that just lend themselves better to face-to-face environments. And one class allows them to come in and still meet that need with limited exposure. So for example, they wanted to come in to take calc or take advanced metals and welding.
Is band considered a class then too?
What's that?
Would band be considered a class?
Yeah, band and choir, both classes, they have their issued grades and receive credits. So those could be included as one of their options. They couldn't choose both, obviously. But they would have that option to participate in one or the other. And then they could choose basically many of the classes.
Yeah.
A student that may need extra support math may choose to come in for math or science or, like I said, with the advanced metals and welding are, are sculpture classes. For some of those just don't translate very well through remote learning. We want to give students, parents the option. So I think those are kind of the biggest. Cindy, can you think of anything I'm missing?
No, I don't think so. I think you covered it well.
I think that's it. Questions, do you have, I guess?
I have, I just have one question and I think it's actually is for all of the buildings. But with Wednesday being that, that dedicated online day for the, at least the first six weeks that we're talking about, I understand, I've heard you guys all talk about various things like that. That might be where you kind of touch base more often with a student. But if I was an online student, could I schedule time, like, what, is it expected that, maybe I am having trouble with one subject. If I can meet with that teacher that, if that schedule works out, would we be allowing that kind of interaction too on that Wednesday day? You know, or, or whatever. Maybe it's right after school or sometimes, any kind of, if, times when those can, I'm not suggesting on a, just, I just come up and show up, but we can work with that teacher to, to get.
Teachers will have office hours as remote learners and, or as remote instructors and that'll, I mean, it'll vary depending on when their available times are, but there's, there will be more than just Wednesday as.
It will be published though.
Yes, oh, yes, 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 yes. That will be published and it'll vary depending on the teacher, but yes, they will be, they will have those office hours just for that exact reason.
Cool. I had a couple of parents ask.
To give you an example of that is, it's like, what I'm, what I'm envisioning, Cindy and I have kind of talked a little bit about this, is that we would set it up on a schedule so then they're not overlapping. So science could be from like nine to 10 and math could be, so then the teachers aren't getting overlapped in a variety of ways. Different students at different times of the day. We could set up, you know, either group or individual sessions to do some extra either reteaching or clarification on some things or providing extra assistance and things. Lessons, you know, like band lessons and things could take place virtually online those days or choir lessons and things. I think we're in the process of all looking at how we can use those Wednesdays.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Vic?
Yeah, just a quick update, Lindsay, on transportation. I don't know what, so just where we sit on transportation. I mean, I obviously mass on the bus, but just.
Two to see.
Two to see.
We have enough, I mean.
We have, is it 31% Carrie?
Yes, yes.
That's a survey, survey said.
From the, from the July, end of July survey, yes.
Okay. So we feel that we should be able to handle that. Even, we've even had people say, they can ride the, they would ride the bus, but if you need us to bring them, we can bring them.
You said, you said two per seat? Even though we only have 31% of the students riding the bus that normally ride or what?
That's what, that's what, the 31% have said that they would, would take advantage of our transportation.
31% of the whole district.
Oh, gotcha. I thought you meant 31% of the people who normally ride the bus. But you're saying overall 31% of those fit. Okay, sorry.
So that was a question, okay.
Any other questions for Vic? Carrie, you would like to, I know, kind of update, get some information there?
I think really all the stuff that the building principals did a great job of covering all that. I think one thing to add, we will be providing through Heartland, some remote learning PD on every, every Wednesday through, we're gonna do just a kickoff during pre-service time and then we'll have approximately an hour per Wednesday for, and it will be broken up by elementary, intermediate together, second, middle school, high school together. This will be done, like I said, through Heartland, through one of their technology people. And there will be, along with that, there'll be a module that teachers can choose from of what they want to take around remote learning. So I know we might have some teachers at this time that aren't doing that, but we also are preparing for if, if we would have to go completely virtual, they would have that training. So half of that, half, half of that hour will be contact time with Marissa Dahl, the instructor, on questions that they might be having around the remote learning, teaching the remote learning. And then the other half will be split between, one Wednesday we'll have specific math, we'll have a math consultant. One time we'll have a reading consultant. We'll bring in somebody around social and emotional. So we're trying to hit all those different core areas. So that's what that PD will look like for those first five weeks once remote starts.
Can I share something else quick? I, I also think it would be good to acknowledge a couple of things. Athletics have started back up this week, so it is great to see our cross-country runners, our football players, our volleyball players out doing their thing back around. It's been quiet for five, six months around the building. It's nice to hear laughter and see smiling faces. And I think it'd be also great to acknowledge Tim Pizzetti. I think he has done an outstanding job. What he did with our baseball guys and the setup that he had for baseball and softball this year, what he did for our softball team. We by far had the best plan of any place that I went. And we went to a lot of different ballparks and he did an outstanding job. He went above and beyond what, what other schools were doing. A lot of schools put up signs and then just people did whatever they want. And he set up some expectations and our community did a great job following those. And so he's doing a great job getting off to a good, good start with football. You know, I was watching a little bit of practice last night. They're following mitigation and stopping and getting hand sanitizer. And I popped my head in and watched volleyball and Stacy's doing a great job with her group of athletes and, and cross-country is a little different because you can spread out outside, but they're doing an awesome job with their mitigation things. And so I think it's, it's good to acknowledge the work that Tim has put in to, to help sports be successful over the summer and to, as well.
I just wanna echo that too. I've had an opportunity to talk to Tim, just like in passing, a few times and, and I know he has put in a lot of work and that wasn't easy. And in a lot of ways, that was a test for how fall and winter would look and it is greatly appreciated. He cares and it's obvious and he puts in that work. And I also saw what, if you went to a baseball game, a lot of people came to baseball and, but they were able to spread out and do this appropriately. But I think we had a, they had a good turnout most of the time.
I mean, the attendance for the district to game against State, there were so much 700 people there.
In that Boone game, it was just.
They were spread out everywhere in every box and so.
It's because of the media slums, right?
Across the street, they were.
They did an awesome job and he set up a scenario that made it successful. So I think it was a, it was a really good thing.
Other guidelines released for football attendance and how that's supposed to look yet?
I, I don't follow that a lot. I've got a lot on my plate.
That's fine, no, I just was.
Tim does have that.
Yeah, I, I don't want detail. That is one of the, if the states come down all of a sudden, here's kind of what.
Yeah, Tim is attending, actually, I think he told me he's attending a in-person meeting in Moon tomorrow.
Yeah.
To discuss some things further. I know that they have attendance guidelines and participation guidelines. There's all kinds of things that, that'll have to be in place for fans and things. Good job.
Thank you so much. Thanks to everybody. That was so helpful, I think, and a lot of people that are watching this. I think that's gonna help maybe the last stragglers make some decisions. So appreciate that. Well, we are on item two. Two hours into this. And this is important. I don't wanna, I mean, thank you, everybody. That's, this is important stuff to talk about, but how, what can we do here? Because I know these guys are gonna start taking breaks in a few minutes if we don't. We have, looks like the next item is mitigation point person. Also, okay, we have Tyler's still on. Mitigation point person.
Yeah, I'm gonna be quick. I've talked to Ashley about being this mitigation point person and hopefully she's still interested in that. I'm just gonna say a couple of things that, that I've talked to her about. I think that Ashley knows the CDC guidelines, the AAP guidelines. She's kind of walking, I don't know, the, the different rules that are out there. I look at Ashley as helping us to make sure that we, if there's changes that are out there, that they're updated. I look at her being options for troubleshooting, working with building principals. We had a mitigation meeting where we brought in the building principals, the, you know, custodians when they're making these. Ashley, Lynn was there because of the, the, basically the inventory and she, she, that's a trial by fire right there. She just did a great job. I'm gonna turn it over to Ashley though because I, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words about what you're thinking about this position, if you're still gonna take it, you know, smiling there, but anything that you would like to say?
Nope, I think you've covered it. I, you know, it's just kind of an extended role for being the chairperson on the health and safety and just continuing that work and facilitating those meetings and, and the follow-up from that. And we've got some communications. When we all met for our mitigation meeting, we have some communications ready to roll out to all of our teachers. We talked about some communication for our patrons and I'm about finished with our staff. Not certification, but training module that we're going to have all of our staff go through as well. And then that's support to building principals, mediation across buildings, just kind of that bridge between all the buildings and all the things.
Have you, one question that I had and it kind of came up just in the, the kind of conversation back and forth here. Pretty clear duties as like what you will do versus maybe what Laura would do or someone else. Cause I think you said you were the contact person, no, contact tracing person?
Laura has contact tracing and I, I wanna acknowledge her too because when we were looking at this flow charts and these things, she just said, can we come in? I asked her if she'd come in and meet you. Anytime she did and she put that stuff together. We're trying to make sure that, that Laura handles any of those things that might be the health related as far as maybe if we have a question from public health or whatever. Ashley has a, a kind of a overarching position there. Like the other day, she just shot us an email and said, hey, did you guys think about the fact of you're, you have those keypads that the, the kids are gonna be using and how are we gonna do that? And what are we gonna do to make sure those are sanitized? Wouldn't even have thought of it. That's the last thing that was on my list. But I think her and Jason had talked about it and I think the building principals have some things that they're gonna do. So Ashley has a, a wide variety of things that she has there.
And that, that makes sense, actually. I'm not, it just didn't ring clear for me before, but like the different strategies and what we can continue to do to be, to meet those guidelines is essentially.
Yep.
Okay. Hello. That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you for doing it, one. And two, the number one thing is just the communication piece. I mean, that's really what we just, between inside and outside the district because we're gonna be getting a lot of questions coming through too and it's nice to have somebody to go to and you kind of can even across the board. So thanks for taking this on. It's a, it's a big role here initially too.
I know. When I volunteer to chair any committee that you need me on.
Thank you.
As the next pandemic, someone else can have that.
It sounds like them.
Yeah.
Yeah, no. So, but like Laura would be the person, or I'm sorry, maybe this isn't Laura, but someone like Laura might be the person who would work with public health. We have a reporting or they're telling them, that kind of thing will go through Laura. Safety communication. I got it. That was.
And they were on the same subcommittee, I believe, weren't you guys?
Yeah.
So they, they've worked together before on this. So she'll handle teachers and students.
So she'll handle teachers and students? You know, if they, for the.
Ideas for mitigation.
For the COVID-19, you'll handle the teachers and the students issues?
Me?
Yeah.
And we're not trying to put Ashley on the firing line. That's not our, our job. Our, our job is to work with her. And if there's some things that, I, I think that what Ashley's gonna do is she's gonna come to our administration meeting at the beginning, just a quick little report on mitigation or COVID-19. And then she can, you know, does not have to stay. And then I, my plans are with Ashley is that we will meet, uh, basically weekly and just, you know, you talked about the communication and things like that, that we have things handled there.
Awesome. Tyler, I, I, is Tyler meeting out too if he has questions or something I want, I don't want to forget him? Okay. Any other questions?
Do we need a motion?
Two of, I don't believe so.
I think it's just an appointment.
That's just an appointment yet?
Lou, um, at the next meeting, we'll, um, we'll have an agenda item to review. And then review the process of the procedures.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you meant just about Ashley.
That's okay.
Yeah, no, just about.
Devin, only John was gonna vote for you.
You got mine.
Okay, next item, staff preschool planning schedule. I think you kind of alluded to this, Carrie. Where is, is it viewed there?
It's on there. You can see it. I, I don't know if you.
I, the board members had a chance to look at it. It does look like they have a plan for the five or so days before school and, and how they're going to onboard people.
We will not meet, what we normally have done is we met in the auditorium as a staff, entire staff. Carrie and I have talked about this. We get it at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. We're not gonna do that. We're gonna basically have remote. Uh, and it's gonna be, I, I don't know if the building principals, how they have it set up. It's gonna be, they're gonna be at their sites and then if they're going into small teams or whatever. But they're not coming all to the auditorium. You want to add anything to that, Carrie?
Uh, no, I think we're gonna, um, they'll probably, like Lindsay said, they'll just be in departments or teen, or grade level teams as we are sharing that opening information, so.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. Looks like the next item on the agenda is announcements and celebrations. Is there anything that we want to talk about? Obviously, our baseball team did very well. Had a great, had a great season. And, and honestly, I mean, baseball and softball both had a great season. And to Vic's point, really proved that we can make this happen, so. Anything else? Was there any other things?
I think again, custodial staff so far has been doing a great job, so. They've been busy. They're gonna be, continue to be busy and just thank you for their work.
And then we throw in a storm on, on Monday. And so it's been a challenge, that's for sure. They've been doing a great job.
No, but like hats off to the administrators too. You guys have, you guys have blown me away tonight with how much progress all of you've made. I mean, it's fantastic, so hats off to you, because you guys have a lot of ground to cover in a short amount of time.
Go back 45 days.
Yeah, I'm, I'm telling you, I'm amazed. You guys are, are good at wind sprints.
I think that's something that Deb mentioned that is interesting related to the storm. It was pretty awesome that shortly after the storm, people opened their doors, started taking like hours going around town. My perspective is only here in town because that's where I live. But we started walking around looking at the damage and students from every age, from the little ones to all the way up to the big ones, were out picking up branches and carrying logs. And it just shows you how great this community is. And students were out there doing so many awesome things to help, uh, help their neighbors out and support each other, so that was pretty cool.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, um, actually, on the next item, board reports. So Gail, I think we have that IASB annual convention, November 18th and 19th, which is virtual, right?
It's virtual, yeah. So, uh.
Will they be sending much?
I will still need to register people. So if, um, anybody, I'll register everybody unless you let me know that you don't want to, because it's not free. So if you know, um, then I won't. Otherwise, I'll plan on registering everybody. And you know what? Since it's virtual, I wonder if, you know, if you do pay and maybe it'll be available in a link like they've been offering in the, in the past, so.
Yeah, typically those recording that is.
Yeah, the recording, so then you can, you know, if it doesn't work, you can pick a different day.
Yeah.
So let me know if you can't attend.
And when does that have to be in? Like, we have another month or two.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and I'll be, it'll be on the agenda every month, just as a reminder, so.
Got that? Okay. First of all, I just want to be mindful. So we've been here two hours and I know, Andrew, you've got time for.
I gave a lance.
Do we need to take just a five-minute break for, is everybody okay? Actually, the rest of the agenda item is not as heavy.
Let's keep rolling.
But, okay, let's go. Uh, first item is 501, second reading of the reviewed amended board policies. So these are the once every five years board policies. And you've noted that this is our, yeah, this is our second reading. Gail is showing the chart right here that shows the recommended action. I believe in each case, we recommended that we match IASB and update legal cross-references, so. Entertain a motion, or do we want to have?
I'm making a motion to approve second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
And we're waiving the third reading.
Was that the motion to approve, I believe? Yeah, that would be a further reading.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, those updated policies pass. All right, the next item is 502, which is the second reading of the reviewed amended policies regarding COVID-19. And again, we discussed these at the last meeting. There's a chart here that shows the differences. These are policies that had wording recommended by IASB. And the suggestions were written on the side. There's a few situations where we had, um, recommended that we consolidate policies that did not in any way change the content of the policy. This would be our second reading of these as well. Now, I would note though that because we have that resolution in the past, we are kind of covered under that resolution for some of these things. Not trying to rush them through. We don't have to have these approved before the beginning of school. But they were pretty straightforward. The two that I would note, and Andrew, one of them, if you kind of, did you have that chart, by the way? I'm sorry about that, Gail.
No, that's fine.
Okay, so if you go toward, actually the ones towards the bottom, those are the ones that are kind of had some substance to them, I mean, actual change or options to select. So just a reminder that the, the policy committee, there was one for district operation during public emergencies. And this was, uh, where we have two options. You either have the superintendent decide, um, about whether we go remote or online, whether it's a school board decision. Lindsay, um, Andrew and I met and we recommended that we go as option two, school board determines the closing.
That's what you were talking about earlier, John, regards to closing down the school board decision.
Yeah.
And I think Tyler mentioned it as well.
Yep.
Yep. And the second one was, oh, I'm sorry, that was during public emergencies. Is this the one? Yeah, I'm sorry. The second one was increased cost, okay. The second one was because of the increased cost of all of the cleaning and the mitigation that we do for our buildings, that there were a couple of options of whether you either pass that cost of the mitigation on to other, um, groups that use our buildings outside of school hours. Or that you could just choose to be a little bit more restrictive or careful about, um, about like not lending our space. But, right, did I capture that right? And I believe that we selected that we just have superintendent discretion to, um, to maybe restrict the, the use of the buildings if that got to be an issue. Was that?
Deb, so the other thing is, I just want to mention that.
Sorry.
I wanted, I updated, um, the leave forms with our headings because I wanted to get them on our website before we met. So I went ahead and I updated them in the policies here too.
Thank you, that's, that's good. A lot of the policies are about leave and, and they link to the forms that are required to fill out and get those benefits for employees. So, any questions? Anything that anybody wants to discuss about those? This is just our second reading, so.
I'll move approval and we waive the third week reading.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion about that? Tyler, any questions? I don't want to forget you, the homie. Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those policies pass. Just a note, Gail, I will, um, come up, I will set up some timing. We will get those all moved. There's some organizational things, so we'll, um, I'll work my gen to get those. Okay, next item. Oh my gosh, look at that. We're onto new business already. Is Adam on the phone?
Yes.
Or on Zoom? So it looks like the next item is history county construction updates and cost budget summary? Adam?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So progress narrative. Uh, seeding contractor was up again today to mow grass and weeds, getting ready to start seeding on Monday. Uh, we are meeting with the contractor tomorrow afternoon to go through their plan, final plan, I guess, to, uh, to re-seed it starting next week. We did shut the, all the power off to the complex Monday. The light bulb that blew over. Uh, electrician was back today to get the irrigation system put back up. But that will be functional when, uh, when we do, uh, the seeding starting next week. Like I said, there were two dugout rooms that blew off, uh, as well as light bulb. Um, those items, as I discussed with Lindsay tomorrow, would be insurance claims to the builder's risk. And I think Lindsay was keeping track or creating a list today of damages around the district. And that would be, would be talked about. Um, I did talk to Tom Baridi today as well about the storage building and they were working on getting stuff delivered, I believe, either yet this afternoon or tomorrow. So that building will also be starting here, um, probably next week. Next item, on my summary at least on the narrative, there were two additional kitchen diffusers that were identified that would need to be installed for cooling in the new kitchen space. When our contractor was balancing the area, it was discovered that these weren't put in. They do need to be put in to have cooling in the kitchen space. You know, Lindsay and, uh, Sam have talked through it a little bit. Uh, we are getting, currently getting pricing from ACI to put those in, but I do not have pricing yet. Estimated at a change of $1,200.
That's a design flaw.
What's that?
That's a design flaw.
Okay.
That's what I would call it.
Yeah, I, I don't, uh, like I said, Sam and KCL reviewed it. There, there is an email out there that talks about it, um, with some more information that I can share. For what they discussed, I don't think Sam's on the call today, so. I can get more information about it in behind it.
Thanks, Adam. Any other questions? None of these, none of the change directives require, uh, they require any action from us. They're all.
Right.
I don't think that, so that was just an update.
Yep, um, all of the substantial completion certificates have been received, so all paperwork, all the extension of insurances, um, for the package, has been booked already.
Nope.
And next month, next month, they should be submitted along with final pay applications.
That Denver sounds like a big meeting. Yeah.
Adam, did those diffusers get, uh, in on the middle school?
Yes.
Oh, they did. Mike already said yes, so don't have to worry about it.
So, uh, I will, I will tell you, not all of them are in. Only the ones in the new spaces are in. Or, sorry, only the ones in the existing spaces. Some of the diffusers are actually in a flood there and need to come and depress them in the new activity. So there are still two rooms that need to be, need to have that, those installed.
All right, thank you.
Yep. And then just the last item here, we did do a one-year warranty walkthrough at the intermediate and elementary buildings as well as high school east band room. Myself, Art, KCL, um, Dan and Steve were on that walkthrough. Only items identified were both at high school east, I believe. One was a door closure panel, just to cover up a part of the frame where they pulled some wires for an automatic operator. And the other item was a light fixture above one of the mirrors in, um, in one of the theater rooms needed to be installed. It was left off. Oxen cover plate were there, but the fixture was never installed, so that needs to be done.
Awesome. Any other questions? Okay. Adam, thank you very much for that update.
Oopsie.
Oh, sorry, Tyler. I, sorry.
Just a quick confirmation, Adam.
Yep.
The grass and the seeding, that's gonna include around building? For example, the east side of the band room, the northeast side?
Yep.
There's lots of areas where, um, construction and the seeding didn't take. So that's gonna include all of those or?
Correct, yep. And they will seed the athletic fields first and then they will move on to those other areas after that. Um, they are anticipating one to two days of seeding at the athletic fields and then two to three days outside of the field.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much, Adam.
You bet. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, next item on the agenda are handbooks. And this is where we typically have kind of a, um, an overview, if you will, or maybe the various buildings go through and, and typically talk about the changes that they've made to the, to the handbooks. And others, before we do that, I, I, you made sure they were very clear in, in the, um, board documents. You, you highlighted the changes. Would the board like them to, to each take a turn of going through handbooks? Or how would you like to? I, I also want to make sure that I ask the administrators if you feel like you want to present them for.
I would just say for mine, mine were related to COVID changes that are.
That's what it looks like.
Do we have a copy of them?
They're all in their own packets.
I just entertaining any questions, Deb, otherwise?
Yeah. Are there any specific, is that all right with you guys?
Yeah, yeah.
I had a couple of questions. I actually just reached out on the thing. I think they were just like maybe not, not updated or they were gonna make a few tweaks with that to the face coverings for that elementary and, and intermediate. But I had, I didn't have any other questions, so.
So what we have is what they're, is, this is what they're gonna extend out? Okay.
Yep.
The only, at the middle school level, there's the COVID things. But then I included the update to the grading policy, um, just that we were moving to the standard space, which, which I talked to the board about and I don't know when that was, may, maybe.
It feels like three years ago.
Yeah.
But yeah.
So just an update there, um, but otherwise, I think COVID related, I don't remember.
Any other questions? I think, oh, Tyler, any questions on the handbooks?
Just on the high school one, Vic, under the masks and face covering, just to make sure that you feel comfortable that's consistent with the previous COVID document we revealed a while ago. And also a minor thing, but I think the school board meeting that's listed in all the other handbooks was on July 20th, not 26th. But my bigger question is, students are indoors, able to maintain six feet of physical distance? Is that, is that where we're going? Because I thought the other one said required.
It is. It's required if, unless you can maintain six feet of social distancing inside, is what it stated as, I think.
Right.
Is that correct?
That is, um, in the, so in the mitigation.
I copied it directly from the mitigation document.
We, we have specifically said that if you are, if it's three feet, there should be a barrier at least, right? We, we talked about all of that. I, I believe then that, that, uh, CDC guidance and that for like outside and all that we said was, if you can do six feet, you don't need to. Now, I believe though that six feet, we're still, we're six feet here and we're still using barriers. So we're not just, uh.
I think it, I, I read, I think it reads, I think it reads fine.
I, yeah, I, it read okay to me, but, um. It's up to, it's up to you guys if there's any other questions about that. Okay.
It's, it's just different language than what's on the face covering document that Lindsay. And I'm, quite honestly, it's for you guys to say, what are you, what are you gonna, again, defend and us defend you? But I just make sure that it's tight and we all agree on, or understand what it is. In that face covering document, I don't see anything about six feet. In that face covering document, I don't see anything about six feet. Um, it just says required at all times.
In the, in the, I'm thinking of, you're looking at the one that's in the board packet, um.
Yep, he's talking about this one.
Got it. I don't, and John is like good about that, is it 4.01, one?
I think I listed the six feet as things that you could do when masks come off. I think we had things listed in the mitigation document, one of those being, if you can maintain a six foot distance.
4.1.3.
During lunch was another time that it can be taken off, and then, um, if you could go outside and maintain six feet of social distancing, would be times that you can take it off, other than that, it would be required at all times.
Well, and I, and I think part of that too, Tyler, a little bit got tightened up. We did, um, have Drew, the Allers and Coney, take a look at that requirement, and so I think he kind of word-doctored a little bit for us, the attorney did, so I think that might be why it's a slight change.
I don't think that Vic's saying, in my opinion, and I have one victim way, and I don't think we're saying different things, but if we, if there's some clarification we need to put there, we can do that.
Yeah, I can, I can look at it tomorrow.
And, and, yeah, I don't think, anyway.
Yeah, in this little, the six, in the face covering document, 4.01.3, um, it does say down below in the narrative, per Gilbert School Board decision, with few, we will be required with few exceptions. So.
Yes, that's right, yeah. I'm, I said, I, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
I just wanted to.
Oh, there was a question.
Gail, one statement about.
So, I wanted to, uh, in here, I know on the employee handbook, I had, you're probably wondering why I put in last year's, but I wanted you to show, I wanted you guys to see what we had in past years, and so if you're wondering why that was in there, um, so I put in last year's handbook to show you, this is what our handbook used to look like, and had no, you know, table of contents, and it was really, so, um, one of our goals this year was to, um, do a new handbook and use ISBs, and that's how we got to where we're presenting that one tonight. And then it was the year to, um, I included the illegals that we moved over, that's been a while ago since we talked about that, so I wanted to show that. Um, but we are using ISBs, and I really like it, it's really nice, and, um, so I hope you guys, um, it is friendly to all of our staff, so they can find things, you know, table of contents, and, um, it'll be a great reference going into the new year.
Awesome. And that was a lot of work, so.
And it continues to be, and still changing, yeah, yeah, still changing. And I have on my notes that on, uh, before we send this out to staff, that, um, I will include the link for the Family First Act, and then, um, also include, um, a link of our, um, illnesses, but I, um, we need to somehow, from what I gather, we need to tell our, our staff what an illness, you know, a fever, what's the fever, and the, the low and the highs, so, and get that information in there so they know what is considered, when should I stay home? So, but I want to make sure that we're using common communications, so we don't create another one, does that make sense?
Yes.
Um, so I'll work with these two ladies on that, and we need to get this out to our employees soon, so they can review it and get ready and, um, prepare.
Awesome questions, okay. Thank you, thank you for that. Okay, no other questions? Uh, did we approve the handbooks?
Yes.
Okay. And do we do the, can we do those individu-, do we do them individually or in mass?
You can do them all together.
Okay. Do we want to entertain?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Those handbooks pass, those are in, with those two, those two exception, or two additional things I feel. Next item on the agenda is nomination for the memorial wall. And is this yours?
Yeah, yeah, we're just, we'll make it fairly quick. This isn't something that we're going to ask for your approval, we're making you aware of this. Uh, I think Joel Kruekenberg had asked, uh, that we, uh, he put in the nomination for this. Um, Carrie and I have worked on it from the standpoint of, uh, we make sure that it meets the criteria, um, and this is a, basically, they, they've updated, this is an example that they had, uh, they've updated the picture a little bit to get out the, the back part of it, and there was a, oh, and boys soccer, there was an apostrophe there. Um, I sent this out to Joel today, he thought it was great. Uh, our plans are that what we normally do, I don't know if this is, make any difference during COVID, but, uh, normally during homecoming week, or the homecoming game, this is, uh, presented, uh, at the halftime or before the game, I'd have to check, and, uh, it's put on the, uh, memorial wall. So just, just an informational thing, if you have any questions, you can ask Carrie, that looks great.
It does, it looks great, thank you. Um, the next item, 604, consider, uh, approved payment for required work related to reopening plan.
Yeah, I, you have the information in front of you, we had one person, uh, that didn't fall into the, getting any type of, um, uh, curriculum dollars because they, uh, weren't in that spot. Uh, this is kind of, you made a, you did this last meeting, this is one that I think that was, uh, needed to be in there too, you can have, uh, you can take a look at that, that's a per diem for five days, that extra work for the, um, the reopening plan. They did not get any, um, they put in the work, the extra work, but they did not get any, um, you know, cr-, is it curriculum dollars, Carrie, that we had? They, they, they would not be available to that.
Yeah, that is correct.
And did we, I mean, is everybody who was eligible for that submitted their?
They're supposed to.
They understand those that's available to them, that's submitted?
Yeah, we did, um, I think that on that, as the committees were working hard in June, every committee chair member, or every co-chair did a really good job of, of saying that at the meetings, and then it was reiterated to them, as a matter of fact, we just turned those, all those hours were just turned in.
Okay.
So they, everybody will get that for their, on their August page.
And the amount of, you know, time, extra time is appreciated, so thank you, Jason.
Yeah. Good job, Jason.
Is there an entertainment motion?
Still moving.
Second.
Any discussion? Where was that second?
Uh. Me.
Andrew, Andrew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All those opposed? No, so that passes as well. Okay. Last item, before we get to the consent agenda, uh, financial report summary, Gail?
I will, there's not much activity going on, but I did, I included the COVID.
So.
I just wanted to, uh, update, I will keep this in here, so every month I'll report on, um, because it overlaps, which is two years, so we need to keep in mind the fiscal year 20, and then fiscal year 21. And, um, just, we received that September 1, we will be getting, the governor released some GEAR funds, G E E R, and those are related to, first, it's about $18,000 for us. Um, those funds will first go to connectivity to students, um, to make sure that they have what they need for remote learning. Um, and then if, um, all those needs are met, and then we can, um, apply it to any of our expenses here, that we want, but we want to make sure that, um, our students have the, whatever they need. So those, uh, funds, we just have to apply, but we have $18,000 there. Um, that's, um, all I know for additional funding at this point. So, um, but I'll keep this tally and this $8,900, um, I don't know, guys, I, there's been a lot that has been ordered and with the plexiglass, so it'll be interesting to see, um, that, that number rise, but.
So that's just the stuff that's come through, not just coming out there?
Yep, and how we, COVID-related, this is just like supplies that, like, we normally would not buy, other than it's related to COVID, so, um, that's how we're tracking it in the, in the accounting system, so.
Awesome.
What is the percent of property tax still delinquent?
Yeah, it's always going to be that, too. Back in April, we were down, you know, 170-some thousand, and we haven't really got that back yet.
We are. We still have some collected, um, to collect, we are at, um, you know, Loi, I will let you know for sure, because I just got a new question.
And my next question is, if we don't receive those funds, as a board, we'll have to adjust something. So we're going to have to, um.
I don't know what we.
That, um, we collect, that's kind of hard, because we collect delinquent taxes, as soon as they pay them, uh, the county passes them on to us, so we can continue to pay, get delinquent taxes for the next year. So, uh, but I will, I will, uh, let me, let me get some actual.
Yeah, we're going to, just let us know, because I know it's a lot.
Yeah, it's up to 170,000 in April, and we're going to keep an eye on it, next two or three months were the same, it was.
You can say we get it all you want, it's, it's like John said, it's going to go up, because the next round in March isn't going to be any better. And we sell them on tax sales, I get all that, but we're not going to realize those funds.
Okay.
So we're going to have to adjust our budget.
Well, and is this our, our budget, we're talking about the money that we use for testable funds.
And our budget is our, yeah, yeah.
It'll be our variance, yeah.
So what's going to, what, you know, the great thing that you guys have done as a board is we set that solvency ratio, and it's been at 12 to 15%. Now, we know with everything that's going on, that we probably won't see those double digits as strong as we want it to be, but we know why, and thank goodness, we have the strong solvency ratio that we do to handle this situation, so, um, but definitely, we will look at those, um, scenarios when.
Do you think the funds we're getting in through, um, the COVID funds are going to pay for most of the expenses we have at this time?
No. We, how they're, so far, how they've been, um, counting and the governor, how she's been allocating to districts, has been based on Title I funding, and it's all based on free and reduced meal population, and ours is around 6% for free and reduced, and that's been part of the calculation. So the first round we got was for like $23,000, and the second round is $18,000.
Okay. Do you have a running total on what we've spent so far on?
Yeah, she just.
That's what she was just sharing.
Oh, I did, I can't see that far. Yeah, so it's.
So right now, we're at $26,817. But.
We've got a lot of bills coming in.
Oh, okay.
But lots, I mean, we're spending a lot of money on, on COVID nineteen supplies.
We got additional custodial, we got additional staff.
Well, and even supplies that the, you know, the, um, building and ministries are saying about, you know, additional classroom supplies that, you know, they normally wouldn't buy, because you don't want them sharing, things like that, so just overall, supplies in general, additional costs have, you know.
You got a ballpark number yet, Gail?
No, it's still, yeah. I will be, I'll be recording it monthly, because as those purchase orders are coming through.
Yeah.
They're coming through fast.
Yeah, I don't blame you, I wouldn't stick my neck out on that either.
Yeah, so I will get some, uh, the property tax information.
I don't, not sure on that whole, here it is, I'm not sure on that whole scenario, you're going to get any clarification when we're going to receive those funds, but like John said, you know, it's going to be our short, we're going to be off budget. And then when we do budget next year, when you do, uh, the dollars, whatever that percentage short, I would, I would consider that again, to consider budget short.
I think, and was this part of what we talked about, too, just because we didn't know, kind of just this tracking that we're doing, to your point, right? We didn't, we didn't set aside an, an amount? Because we didn't know what it was, and we're kind of just doing.
Yeah, there's going to be lots, um, lots of things that we haven't budgeted for, but we'll just have to know that our solvency ratio of 20, 15% will not be as high in there. Um, it's, it's hard, you know, you can try to budget for everything you can think of, but, um, we set a budget so far in advance that, you know, these things happen, um, so.
But tracking is, I mean, when we set next year's budget, we'll be like, okay, how much of these COVID things are repeatable?
Correct.
And we'll be able to, to knock that down good, by the way, you're doing this, Gail, and by having our monthly actuals versus budget, I think we should be knocking it down pretty good.
Yeah. And, um, so, other than that, um, there's, hasn't been much activity on, oh, I just, the other highlight, I see it as nutrition fund, we were able to, we had a big enough balance in there from the grab and goes, that we were able to pay off all the salaries for the year. Um, so we're, um, and so going forward, um, we, I will not be paying for salaries, um, we're just going to leave it in the general fund and just see, um, I have no idea what to expect, and, um, so.
For what reason? You say that?
Because of sales. You know, the whole lunch program is, um, you know, how many students will eat, how, what's the sales, what's it look like, um, what if we, you know, will the kids eat remote? We, we're offering meals for remote kids along with, it's just, it's a different, it's different, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a different system this year, so.
I think the harder one, I think, that we all should realize, is by opening campus to the nine through 12, is, is we've really gutted that program, people won't stay and eat.
They'll probably go to Wendy's as well, I would think.
Well, I don't, I don't think I'll be that lucky.
But Jeff, you also heard Vic say too, that they are doing something to offset that a little bit, and we knew this would be that way.
Yeah, and that's, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we're not, we're not going to get.
It's going to be tough.
Yeah, we're not going to get any kind of, um, travis on how many people we're going to feed per day or anything like that.
We have, I, we have no idea what to expect.
Right, so.
Yeah, but what we're really hoping for, and we have, you know, what we would love to have happen, is that they cover in a summer program like that grab and go for the whole rest of the year, that, you know, people don't have to pay for meals, and, and we just keep that summer grab and go going, and that would be, but they're not saying anything about that's going to be an option, so. We'll just roll with it.
Yeah. Good questions. Any other questions for Gail? Uh, Tyler, any questions? I just want to leave you out.
No, I just a public statement, which you can put in the minutes if you want, I just calculated out of two trillion dollar package, that comes out to $6,000 for American citizens, and we got a whopping $10 per student out of that deal, so. I think it's a travesty what education's getting out of the, the government COVID act.
Yeah. Agreed. Agreed.
Was that two trillion, 6,000, and $10?
$10.
Yeah, out of two trillion, for 330 million, that's, uh, $6,000 a resident, and if you said 18,000 from the district, that's a little more than $10 a student is what we're getting.
I think he wants to say thanks. We got it, Tyler, thanks.
Okay, um, moving on, uh, are there any, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I think, um, Lindsay and I talked, we'd like to maybe highlight two as well. Before we do that, should I, let's, let's let you do that, and then we'll ask if anybody else wants to pull out items.
I know it's unusual for, uh, me to pull this out, but one of the things that, uh, I'd like to pull out is, uh, Deb Parcell, is, uh, put in her resignation, and, uh, we had a, a chance to talk to her, um, and I, I understand completely, uh, her resignation. She has been willing to, uh, work with us, so that, a couple of different things, she is going to help us, uh, as far as, uh, being a consultant from the standpoint of trying, as we find a, a new person, and second of all, there's a lot of stuff in this nutrition game that's out there as far as COVID related, you know, these guys are, ladies and gentlemen out here are, are really doing a good job, and the, the nutrition is like out by itself. So, um, I just wanted to, first of all, say that I think that Deb has done a heck of a job, I, I, I can't say enough good things about that, uh, she will be missed, uh, but I also want to say that, uh, I mean, you know, we did the grab and goes, and I mean, it's just, it didn't miss a beat, uh, but she has said that she will help us to find that person, uh, kind of be a mentor, and, uh, do consulting, so I wanted to let you know that, and the other one we talked about was Bob Torrance.
Yeah.
Uh, Bob has been, uh, working in, uh, the high school, uh, as far as, uh, doing a, a variety of things there, and he's done a nice job, and, and just wanted to recognize that for the longevity there. Did you want to say anything else that I missed?
No, other than I had an opportunity to work with Deb, um, Bob as well, but, uh, Deb, this, this summer, on the summer meals, and a lot of hours, a lot of extra hours put in, and is much appreciated, a, a lot of people have done a lot of extra hours, but.
Hard shoes, hard shoes to fill.
Hard shoes to fill, for sure.
I would, I would, I would offer this to you, Lindsay, um, since the date is, is of August, we might be better off going to Deb and see if she'll, um, consult until January and make January the hiring day, because we're going forward right now, and there's so much stuff that's got to be done, um, that if she can do it from a third, you know, from a way, and we just hire another food service and, and take one of the people and make them a lead, and then let them report to Deb, until we get, unless somebody really good walks in and we can make a move, but this is a tough time.
I think you got.
Like you were.
Yeah, play with it, see if you can hear her to do that, because we're, hey, we're all big fans of Deb.
We left it open until filled, so we can see what kind of applicant pool we have, but she's given us some great resources. I guess there's some graduates in December that really haven't filled for jobs yet because Hy-Vee laid off a lot of people and they're, and closed down some of their food.
The depictions.
So we'll see what kind of applicants we get.
I'd at least get her on to keep her, so we don't have that opening for right now.
Okay, any other items that we'd might like to pull out of the consent agenda, sorry? Okay.
Still moved.
What, is there a motion to?
Second.
Is so moved? And second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Okay. The last thing on the agenda is just the calendar. So what we have here is our next meeting on September 14. Annual meeting, so that's when we'll have officer appointments, et cetera. As well as, I believe that's when we'll have our discussion about the continuing after October 2. Yep.
It probably will be a fairly long meeting.
Which one is that, September?
Okay, that's September 14th, October 12th will be the following regular meeting.
Why would it be a long meeting?
We have lots of personnel items, we have lots of revisiting, and then there's the election of officers.
Yeah.
Oh, I do want to, starting in October, we need to start, I have a word in with our attorneys, we need to start looking at our instructional support levy, it's going to expire April 15. So I have it in my calendar that we need to visit that this fall and look at how we want to continue that going forward.
Awesome.
I got a quick question, Lindsay, I know I mentioned this, about a Q and A from community members. Is there something that we're going to open up to the community so they can ask questions to us? Because right now communication's all been email, which is fine. But you always learn email only hits a certain percentage. I'd like to hit a little bit more, so.
Right, there's going to be a video that's coming out and then there's also going to be a Q and A, and I know you say, well, it went a little bit different than email, but there'd be both those that'll come in.
Okay, are we going to hit social media pretty hard with it too? I mean, just to hit social media, hit email, I just want to make sure.
So you think we're missing?
Well, first of all. Email only, I mean, again, every business, email hits a certain percentage. They don't read it. So how are we going to hit the other people that just don't read their emails from Gil?
So the people that don't read their emails, we're going to get them somewhere, somewhere their way.
I just want to see what questions they have. I want to make sure, because we're three weeks away from the school opening up.
Yeah, it's too late.
I want to make sure any questions.
And guys, hey, guys.
Not about too late, I just wanted to see if they have questions, we can answer.
You've got a good question. I think that somebody out here has some good information about what they have done.
Yeah.
Because they did reach out and ask for questions and I think they've received hundreds.
How many questions did we receive? Do you know, Amy?
170 people that responded. Some asked, everyone of those asked one question, some asked two, and some asked three.
And so there's somewhere around 800 or so questions that they've.
So how many did you send out? If you got 170 response, what, how many did you send out?
What to the district email?
We just sent it as a district survey.
As a district, and what you're saying is people don't respond.
I just see, and at some point our only communication right now is email, okay, which is great, it's a large percentage. But there's also a percentage of people, and I'll tell myself, I don't read all those dang emails. So what other thing could you do for a quick hit? I mean, just listen to these board administrators talk about what they've done in the school. I want that same message out without it written.
Yeah, the link of the, of the principal description.
You know, where they're at, where they're sitting, how, you know, what's going on. That's, I want to have that message out before, again, we got a school opening up here in three weeks. I want that same message out there and not typed out. It's kind of what I'm asking. There's a.
No, he's good.
We don't do a lot.
We're, we are taking the five main areas and that really took them from the return to learn and we're going to take those big nuggets from those questions. And then they will be addressed, so we'll really have five short videos, because if the video's too long, people get tired of reading it, they don't. They kind of, but we want to have that and then we will also have, be able to refer to our FAQ for that, just keep, and we are going to keep that open, the question link, because we still are getting a few questions in there and then we will keep coming back to those.
Perfect.
So that people know when to answer.
The school's going to look different. This is a whole new school year. I want to make sure we, they feel that much more comfortable sending their kids to school that first day and they know everything they need to know, because it's going to, it's going to be different.
They should open their emails.
You are right on.
I would, I think, you're right though, is, I would, because of that.
Yeah, we, we can't, we have to have multiple channels for communication.
No, I agree. It's just frustrating they don't do it.
Okay.
We'll do adjournments.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.